Yes, sir. Please identify who you are.
I'm Garrett Snell. I bought a house on 517 South First eight years ago. And concerning one privacy fence that got put up between my property and Joe Holson's property, the trailer porch across from the pool. I've been told numerous times throughout the eight years that this, I mean, it's Joe Holson's responsibility to get it put up. I've been, I've talked to Andy Bauer and Dunn, said that it needs to be put up as a city ordinance. I'm just kind of curious of how much longer it's going to be before it gets put up.
How long have you waited now?
You what?
How long have you waited?
Eight years.
I think the biggest question is, is it a city ordinance that there be a privacy fence there?
According to Andy Bauer.
That doesn't have to be a privacy fence, it has to be screening, which can means it can be privacy fence, it could be bushes of some type. Andy Bauer said it could be jammed with bushes because it can't be transparent.
Well, I will disagree with her on that particular issue because we have looked at that. It can be screening. We have charged in municipal court. The joint property owner has been found guilty. He made the decision, or he, Joe Holz, appealed it to district court. At that time, the city prosecutor made the decision not to challenge it in district court. So from a city staff standpoint, that is what we can do to enforce that particular provision of the code.
Why was it not prosecuted in district court?
I can't answer that for you.
I can check on it, but I don't know.
So is this a woman done?
Can you go back?
Well, I think, I think you do it again. Sure. Every day would be a continuing violation, I would think, but I'm not sure what the problem was with the prosecution. Maybe the cost, you want to do a jury trial? You know, I don't know. I can check on that.
It's probably if, if this ordinance, or is that where it is, the city ordinance, or is it a state statute?
No, it'd be city.
City ordinance, it's in the city's own. If there's an ordinance that says it should be there, you buy this other property joining and have expectations of it being put up, but it doesn't happen, that comes back to us, in my way of thinking.
Who would initiate this, these procedures? Would it be police department, the city?
Police department issued the citation.
Yeah, police department issued the citation. Could be a complaint from the neighbor, it could be the police department noticing the violation themselves.
So if, if he filed a complaint?
Tim would investigate it, and if he felt there was a violation of the ordinance, he would proceed under the ordinances to file an actual complaint in municipal court. Sounds like the decision was made in municipal court that, that there was a violation, but for whatever reason may be chosen not to proceed with a trial on appeal.
She told me, I'm not trying to...
No, that's fine.
She told me that it was going to cost the city more money to chase it through the legal process than it would be for them to just put it up.
But they didn't, but...
No.
She probably done it for the city.
Yes, yeah, she said it'd be cheaper for the city to put it up, than to chase it through court.
Bill, if it goes that far, you said isn't a daily violation?
I haven't looked at the ordinance, but I would think it would be, you know, just like any other violation of any other ordinance, it's a continuing basis. Usually, usually every day is a continuing, is a separate violation.
Good.
But the point is, no matter how many times one might be found guilty in municipal court, if its entire, the entire proceedings are appealed, then it's a question of whether it's worth it to proceed with the appeal or not, whether the ordinance would stand up at that level. I don't know, I'll just have to find out more information.
One thing would you check when you located that, since above Home Park is an overlay district and not a permanent zoning, is failure to comply with requirements of a zoning district valid reason to repeal that overlay district?
Put some teeth in it.
That's good. I'm not, I'm just going to say, I know it's an ordinance, but I think the underlying rationale, or reason that it's an ordinance is impacting or creating hardship for years of property ownership, right? And I've heard, I've heard something trash. All the trash flows into my yard from them fifteen trailers or whatever it is, and I just, I have great ears, I think something, other than, I don't know, should be replaced.
I'm Bud Spousen, okay, I'd add a few comments, please.
You can come to the podium, please.
I'm very, very tense now, and along with Bud's concerns, my concerns are also, when this first came about, we came to the city, trailer courts started getting cleaned up, all trailers got taken out, I'm assuming it was by the city, if I remember correctly.
Tim, should I say yes?
Then they started moving in newer, better quality trailers. There were several different occasions, we came home for the weekend and had the trailers on the property, we've had to call the city department, the police department, we've gone out on our own and had our property survey.
I had a whole block survey because me and Joe could not agree on a property line.
So we...
I made six hundred dollars out of my pocket to have the city block surveyed because there was no property in the whole block. There are now.
We'll discount the trash. We have younger neighbors now, and that's concerning for us, and we...
Well, the fact that I've got a kid that's just out of two years.
Sure.
Well, if that fence should be up, I shouldn't have to worry about her running over there, and there should be something, a very big bear. Well, kind of like me, they've done their due diligence, they've, you've started this process a number of times, and I believe if you, this is just me, I can be correct if I'm right, attorney, but file another complaint? See where it goes.
I would agree with, but I've heard, I don't even know that they have to file another complaint if there is a code violation that can be initiated by either chief or town judge. Is that right?
Well, yeah, a complaint could, we're not talking about a formal complaint, we're talking about a complaint at the police office, not a formal complaint at the court. They make the complaint to Tim, Tim will investigate it and proceed to file a formal complaint, should he wish to do so.
Tim, does this count as a complaint?
I'm sorry?
Does this count as a complaint, Tim? Is this good enough for you?
That's what you want me to do?
Let's do this, I take the direction that we direct staff, Tim and others, to, to look at this again, go through the process, determine what code violations there are. I think great idea, putting some more teeth into it with bills, work on that, let's get it to the forefront. Again, work it through the process, see where we are, see what it takes to, to get this ordinance enforced, and, and then go forward from there. Tim, is there a timeframe that these, this couple could expect to hear back from you or to know where we go, or what does that take between them? Is it another two weeks, we'd have something ready to go? Is it a straight-up violation?
I wouldn't think it'd be that long.
Okay. I mean, does it come back to here for a resolution and then?
Not necessarily, no, I mean, if there's, if there's a complaint that is issued, it's just filed with municipal court.
Okay. Would you, I would ask Tim, that you keep them posted on what the, where they're at in the process, and let them know, and direct you and other staff to make necessary arrangements to move forward with it.
I know one thing that's going to make it an issue to do any kind of privacy buried, whatever you want to call it, is his trailers are like inches, maybe a foot off the property line. You know, when I was talking to Andy Bauer, there's a, what's the word?
Ease, man?
So I was like, chuck back.
Of like five or somewhat, but I don't remember, it's been too many years ago, when I talked to her. Well, that's going to cause those trailers that are angled, joining my property, to have to be moved. Well, they're already too close to the street, so they can't be farther off the property line, so I don't know, I don't need to worry about that, so maybe...
Well, I bet, you know, the complaint's made, I don't think you want to hear the case, right?
Yeah, yeah, let's go ahead, we'll have all staff look at it, from all points, and we'll do the review on that. We do appreciate you coming forward and letting us know, and I would expect the information from Chief Burman, we'll let him be your point of contact for you back, and at this point, and so please expect some information from him. Thank you very much for coming forward and bringing your attention. Any additional public input at this time? Seeing none, we'll move to the hearing process for the Holz property. Joe, would you step forward? Joe, would you step forward? Seeing no, Joe Holz on the premise here.
I think you need to get the report from the police chief, or from someone who is complaining in this matter, to justify the adoption of the resolution.
Tim, would you step forward?
Is a brief, a brief summary of what the current problem is? I think you need to open the hearing, listen to what's presented, and close the hearing.
Okay. I officially open the hearing. Chief Burman?
Bring forward a complaint against property owned by Joe Holz. The property is located along the trail, next to Mid-Kansas Coa, it would be north of Lincoln Street. I don't have the exact numbers, but the exact addresses, look, is listed in the ordinance, or the...
Resolution.
Resolution. Letter was hand-delivered to Mr. Holz, for him to remove the property from the, that he scored from there. Basically, what he did was he took some of the metal property from Hol Street, and he moved it over there next to the trail. We had numerous written complaints about this property being there, and he's given notice, given a certain amount of days to correct the problem, and it has not been corrected. So my request is that we go to a plea and have the property removed.
Any additional? Is there any public input that we should escape to this?
Do we have members here that have submitted?
That's what I'm asking.
Okay.
Right.
Any one yield for somebody who wants to speak to it?
Please, people. I have the Vickery, which I have 108 north First Street, and this particular property of Mr. Holz, it's right in our backyard. All there along, since it's been there, I think we've seen this scumson cats. But my biggest concern is, how about this summer? The brush is already growing, and there aren't being mosquitoes, there's lots of stuff there that holds water. Another thing I need to bring up is, you know, we've got a lot of visitors that come to town, and we see people on the trail continually, and just, and college kids are out there running and walking on the trail. I think it's just a bad impression of what Linsburg can offer people. You go by that place, and you keep on going. Nobody, very few people that use those benches that are there, because right there in the I just think something else ought to be done, because we should be proud of our town. Thank you.
Appreciate your energy. Any additional reports to be taken at this time? Bill, is there anything else we need to do before?
No, we can close the hearing at this point, and then you, I know later on the agenda, you have consideration for a resolution based on the hearing.
Close the hearing at this time, to be talked about under new business. Amendments to the agenda. Hearing done. Mayor's report. Start off by hoping everybody remembers the holy week events at the college, and athletes join in and be a part of those throughout the week and the weekend, welcome our visitors downtown. Want to move on to the fair housing proclamation, and I'd ask Gary, his community government to step forward and do that for us.
Thank you, Mayor. The proclamation celebrates forty-eight years of fair housing in city of Linsburg. Whereas, the Congress of the United States passed the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-eight, of which Title A declared that the law of the land will now guarantee the rights of equal housing opportunity. And whereas, the city members is committed to the mission of intent of Congress to provide fair and equal housing opportunities for all. And today, many realty companies and associations support fair housing laws. And whereas, the fair housing groups and the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development have over the years, received thousands of complaints of alleged illegal housing discrimination, and found too many that have proved upon investigation to be violations of the fair housing laws. And whereas, equal housing opportunity is a condition of life in our city that can and should be achieved, I, so says the mayor of the city of Linsburg, on behalf of its citizens due hereby proclaim the month of April as Fair Housing Month, and express the hope that this year's observance will promote fair housing practices throughout the city dated this twenty-first day of March, two thousand and sixteen.
Can you adopt? Second.
Said, moved and seconded to adopt. Gary, thank you for reading that in, if you would bring that forward. Will all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Close, same sign. Thank you, motion carried. Remember to tend, if anybody thinks that's... Consent agenda? What is your desire?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Said, moved and seconded, all, roll call, please.
Roll call, first, consent agenda? Email?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Motion carried. Planning and zoning, nothing at this time, correct, Gary? Under old business, cool shade structure? Kate?
Yes, so this is for our linoleum structure, between the deep end there and the water side, and we just had from last meeting, some more questions and concerns. First regarding those benches that Super Sliding had suggested installing, instead of just redoing the wooden pieces that are there. And you'll see in your packets you have, there's a real picture in there of some of the benches, and the structure below it. And one of the questions was whether or not there's a warranty that came with those benches, and there is a second warranty that comes with them. And I believe the other concern was the material, which again, you can get in real or green, but whether or not that material would be substantial or not when it gets hot out in the summer and then someone would go sit on it. And you'll see in the description there of that bench, it does explain that there is a thermoplastic coating on it, and this protective coating creates a smooth, high-gloss surface that stays cool to the touch, for comfortable seating even in the sun. The coating resists fading mold and vandalism, and will ensure maintenance-free durability through the years of high-traffic usage. So essentially, these benches, you know, they build them and they come from the purchase of primary materials outside. And I think the other concerns and questions from last time were around what we do with the wood on the structure. You'll also see in your packet, the first one from Super Sliding, he provided more information on what the middle metal pieces would be, he went with metal instead of wood, and that would be flat. And then there's also a diagram below all that, it shows you kind of a real detail on pencil there, what it would look like, all the different pieces, and again, this would be for the flat ones, and then if you go down a little further, there's more diagrams of what the A-frame would look like. And he sent us two pictures, too, one of what it would look like as an A-frame, and then the other, of what it would look like if you just did a simple flat frame on it. Which is me. In the packets, thank you. It was a bit, what I was gonna say.
The difference between those two, purely aesthetics, or is there some...
It's mostly aesthetics, only I really can think of with it, and it's same with the contractor's, you know, off-season weather elements, you know, with the A-frame, obviously anything that hits it's going to fall off and not hit the structure at all, whereas the flat, you know, is going to stay there and not come off until it gets warmer out and it's off a little bit. And I think the two contractors that came in and looked at it, you know, clearly looking at it, well, your pool house you have is an A-frame, so they were just kind of, well, we could do an A-frame, and then what the pool house looks like. And then you'll see Scott from Mid-Kansas also gave two drawings, what it would look like as an A-frame again, and also what it would look like flat. And that would be...
And that's part of the lattice, so the sudden, it's not a solid structure.
Right. Because I completely believe it is, I mean, it shows the little points and edges going to the wood, but the hole would be the, mostly covered up, so it wouldn't work this way.
So it would provide shade.
Yes.
But none of these say how high above the ground is the roof going to be?
Yeah, not that, I mean, it would be the same as the existing structure there, plus if they did the A-frame, then it would probably be, you're looking at maybe two or three additional feet.
So the only shade from this set roof is going to be straight down?
Yeah, it's straight down.
I mean, the sun's going straight down.
Mm-hmm.
Earlier or later in the afternoon, no shade.
There was still, I mean, if you have the flat top on it, there are, I mean, there's definitely going to be a little bit of sun that comes through, just with the way the sun moves and whatnot, but with the top there, that actually is still in, and not with all the gaps we have right now, there would be shade there for a little bit.
And you see my point, the point still is, except when the sun is straight overhead, which there would be shade. Otherwise, it's not going to shade for benches.
When it's not directly overhead?
Yes.
Correct.
Is there any concern about metal roof and metal bench on that? I mean, I don't remember how tall that is yet. Tell people like David to jump up and slap the metal or...
I'm sure I do that all, with your head.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's very metal, I haven't been there for... I don't, I don't think that would be an issue.
How far is anybody reaching out there and getting their fire butt?
And I don't think so.
Well, my comment still is, these people can say that these benches don't get hot, but when they're in the direct sun, they get hot. And if you're a person who's swimming, and you're going off the board, let's say, you get out, you want to rest in it, the line's longer, and you're going, you must sit down, you don't just have your towel right there with you, and they're hot. I mean, I'm opposed to that, because I think they should still be some kind of a wooden bench. The others have been there. How long do you think, Rick?
They finished.
Well, I, he for about, is it ten years?
There's just seven years, I'm working on it.
Seven years. I mean, the wood gives excellent resistance to getting too hot, and, and will last a long time. I think the idea of all this is great, but I just don't think those are the kind of spaces you want there.
I'm still not, in my aesthetics of it, looking at the pitched roof in that area doesn't, to me, doesn't fit the fact of the structure that belongs to the pool area, from the aesthetic. Metal or... You know, I think the pergola or whatever, that gives some shade is what...
Traditional pool shade.
Do we know how much the shade is appreciated? Is it a valuable part of the pool?
Well, I would say from a healthcare standpoint, it's our, it's our obligation to offer some shade structures. I think it's well documented that skin cancer is on, on the rise, and, and I think it's wise to have areas to seek shade. So, yes, as well as it provides a safe resting area, or a place for a parent or an older adult to monitor kids in the deeper end. So I, I think it's a valuable structure.
I kind of agree with Bill as far as the pitched roof versus the flat, and I, if it was a flat roof, I would not want to have the metal. I guess one of the concerns would be snow load, again, it's only sitting on a six-by-six, you know, which way is that going to go? And then also, you know, pitched roof and metal on top, if it's not enclosed underneath, it's just a great haven for birds. And then, we have the problem with the mess with that versus we have just the, or the wood, and everything else, I've got that in my house, my deck, I don't have birds missing it. But I think if we did something else, we would have that issue.
In, in mid-America, the wooden roof, the lattice style, they have the option for the seating benches as well, they would be someone who walks there.
Right.
They would just rebuild those.
And actually, both contractor contractors can do that, where they would just extend it with wood, with what's existing to make it wider.
I would have to agree, I prefer the wood look, I prefer the wood look. I'm a little more trusting, I'm a thermoplastic engineer, but, but I personally prefer the wood look, yeah. And if we've gotten twenty years, I would, oh, do we expect another twenty years? And those benches are going to last beyond seven. They're saying that they're, they're more than two for seven years.
Will, will the whole thing be stained?
Yeah, well, we, if we go all wood, there'd be coating on it, or the wood...
And the existing one as well would be brought up to it all look...
Yeah.
I think that's nice.
Yeah.
And as I recall, you said that the six-by-sixes that are there, they looked at that, and they feel...
Yeah, she looked at all of them, there is, I should mention, there is one of all of them that actually is ever so slightly lean a little bit, but they said even with that leaning right there, it's probably workable and should be fine.
But what I was getting is their structural sound, they just said the concrete, there's no lot down there.
Correct.
They moved it, and they, they feel, they're for coffee with that.
Yes.
I like the flat one, the Mid-Kansas, looks good, made, I think it'll do what we need, and price is good.
Is that a page, can you give me page number here? Tell me out somebody that, where are you looking?
Four.
I think I, I saw Mr. Holz at the same one. We're all on the same page, right here, correct?
Page thirty-five.
Page thirty-five, you're, just so we're all on the same page, and so if it's summer, you know, the pool summer will look like, you know, you'll be provided for that. Thirty-five in the book, and the cost of that?
Is...
Twenty-two fifty-one away?
Yep. I have one more question.
No, go ahead.
Have we ever had any instances of people having splinters from this wood seating?
No, I have not heard any, but the same that I've seen in Aspen recently, it won't be used very much anyway, so it's up to that.
It's going to happen, I've got over three hundred fifty tables already. It's going to happen. Whether they complain about it or not, I don't know, but it will happen.
Does anybody in the booth want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve Mid-Kansas construction LLC for twenty-two hundred fifty-one dollars and eighty cents.
Second. Said, moved and seconded, that is the flat structure?
Yes.
That we're talking about? So, additional comments?
Does that fall into agreement with what you were saying, Bill?
Yes.
And that's the lattice that I'm sitting on, like, does that provide shade? That's my concern, I suppose.
These are four-inch, I'm centering.
Okay.
There are two before, says, if I read it correctly.
If it doesn't, it's not hard to get up there and put some water on it.
No, it probably won't, then I need to kind of move it in.
Yeah, it's definitely...
All right, no further discussion, roll call, please.
Kelly?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Ema?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, gang, we appreciate it. Tim, would you like to step up and talk to us about the old business asphalt street bit?
Actually, I'm for Kevin Stigman. Got a revised quote, reflects the actual quantity that we want to have then. This would be a four-inch millimeter overlay of a four, five-hundred blocks of wood ceiling with a five-seven... This will be a four-inch millimeter lay of a four, five-hundred blocks of whistling with a fly ash sub base. Four-inch millimeter lay of a three-inch white swenson and a six-inch millimeter lay of fly ash and a third. This is a total of five-hundred seventy-seven dollars and twenty cents more than the first quote, but it's...
Active now.
The record we've also been approved, uh, one hundred fifty-three thousand seven hundred sixty-nine dollars and fifty cents to the eight-pack shares located.
So moved.
Second.
And they've been seconded, uh, discussion on this proposal?
Is this who we normally use for all of that? I mean, did they defer bid process on this?
We, there's no other paper in this part of the country, uh, I did hear what you said last time. We will try to get somebody in to make long distance bids in the future, but, uh, you know, all we do is ask.
Yeah.
They probably won't travel this far for pensions, but we can try.
Additional questions?
Uh, scheduled for the summer of twenty sixteen. Do we have a date?
I mean, we were talking earlier, it was doing, I told them they couldn't start until after school was out because of Thermo Street. And, uh, at the time, he was saying that their standard look are pretty good. They could probably get right on it. So we've had a little bit of delay. I haven't talked to him about next season.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions? Roll call, please.
Ewa?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Kelly?
Motion carried. Item B, insurance quote. The Hall's property.
Motion to develop.
Second.
And moved in seconded. Is there any change on this grant?
Yeah, um, distributed to was in the, in the packet that you were, uh, delivered electronically. It said that the abatement must be completed by January fourteenth, um, twenty sixteen. The resolution that was distributed to you before the meeting changes that item in line three to be completed by April one of twenty sixteen. So it has been corrected.
Was the motion based on this credit form?
The motion is based on a, uh, completion date, uh, or, or the notice dated April first, twenty sixteen.
Complete date.
Complete date, thank you.
Seconded, your estimate, okay. Cory?
Make this question for chief. Are, are all these items still on property as of today? Yes. Okay. And one thing I want to point out while it talks about the abatement, there is also the opportunity, um, to charge this in municipal court. And each and every day would be a, another violation in this order, or this, excuse me, this resolution does not prohibit us from doing that.
So do you need anything else from council? Or recommendation to proceed through municipal court?
City principal says no, he understands where we're at here.
Once this is resolved and it's been abated, for example, and the following day, Mr. Hall springs forth, step on the property, restart this process again, correct?
That's correct.
Bill, that's based on city orders, which is based on statute, correct?
That's correct.
The statute that governs us, timing and specifically how you notice is given and when and where that happens.
Correct.
State statute, you're going to do that, okay?
So for all of us, including those who take in times, write a letter and file a complaint, um, all of this is, um... What we're saying is we want this done by April first. And if it's not, we remove it and bill him. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Brings a question. Do we, and I don't know the answer, do we have to remove and store? Do you hire a scrapper to come and get rid of it?
No, if it's determined to be junk, you can dispose of it. I mean, maybe a salvage person wants to take it on and they can, they'll pay for it. I don't know. I mean, we've gone through that before with some of the items that we've had to deal with on Cole Street property. They salvaged some of that, I believe, did they not?
They did.
Yeah. It's not going to return.
No.
Yeah.
Okay. But we don't have to store it somewhere?
No.
I mean, nothing in the order that says we have to store it.
No.
If it's abated, we, we get rid of the property and it's done. It's over. There's no recourse against the city or anybody else.
Not at all.
And nothing that says who determines it's junk and who deserves it.
I mean, I'm not saying that they wouldn't turn around and file a lawsuit against the city for the value of it, but then what's the value? You know, if it's minimal. And if there is anything that is salvaged and the cost of the salvage is, is credited against the cost of removal. He's not being hurt.
Appreciate all the advice, Bill, on that. Do you have additional questions about resolution oh-seven one-six? Roll call.
Blaine?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Ewa?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, chief, and your officers are going to work on, on that and keeping us abreast of properties that are like that. We will continue to take action on it forward, so I'm just saying that they're after looking around and now please keep your eye out for any of those properties that we need to continue to monitor. Appreciate it. Item B, insurance quote. Larry has risen to the occasion to come forward and talk to us about it.
The current insurance package for the city, except for work comp, which we have through KMEA. And KMEA, uh, work comp runs a calendar year. The rest of the insurance runs April first through March thirty-first. We used to have, uh, insurance agent. It helps always, uh, EMC insurance. So in order to be able to bid the process out, we went to brokerage services. We had agents tell us the what services they were able to provide. Food Co., Wood Piper Insurance, uh, was able to give us the best option at this part of brokerage services. We have a three-year term with them right now, uh, with a few exceptions. The insurance reveal is pretty consistent with prior year. We've calculated a two percent increase on property values, other than that, uh, with the annuals runs were a little bit higher. There is a twelve-thousand-dollar agency service fee that is not included on this proposal. Normally, the agency service fee is included in the, in the insurance quote and it's a percentage of the, the, uh, the quote. You never know exactly how much it is. Food Co. sent the, for a three-year term, they've got a year to twelve-thousand-dollar fee. So, uh, the only question we have right now is, uh... Uh, I recommend we approve the sixty-nine thousand four hundred and ten eighty plus a twelve-dollar, twelve-thousand-dollar agency service fee for the, the insurance package. And the question is, do we add the nine-hundred and twenty-one dollars for the cyber solutions?
The motion are decided. Is there a motion on the floor?
I'd make the motion to approve the insurance proposal from Wood Piper as presented by Larry. And I would also recommend that we add the cyber solutions coverage at a cost of nine-hundred and twenty-one dollars.
You heard a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second and additional questions on the city's insurance proposal?
What do you think of this, Larry, this adding this extra fee?
I, I don't know. Eventually, it will be something that we'll have to do. Right now, it's kind of a fifty-fifty as far as whether we really need it. There may be other instances where it would be good, but, uh, our experience is with the credit card, uh, going straight through to the other company. The things that we have right now are, are set social security numbers, driver's license numbers and so forth, so there, there is good reason to have it.
Less than three dollars a day, you can't, I don't think, it's, it's less than three dollars a day to have it a year, so why?
Well, I just don't feel I really understand it.
Well, our recommendation would be good, and the reason being is because we do have possession of, of customer-sensitive data.
Yeah.
Number one. Number two, I can tell you that at one time we had, um, what's called an open da, open data leak on our, uh, regarding our budget. And in tracking the history of that, the majority of the hits on our open data for our budget information were from Russia. Additionally, uh, I subscribe to what's called the Multi-State Information Access Center, which sends out notifications regarding vulnerabilities in software. And I guarantee you, I get at least twenty to twenty-five a week of notifications of, of weaknesses in, in software. It includes everything from, um, you know, your basic Internet Explorer to, um, Oracle-based systems. So it's a, it's a wise insurance policy.
Tiny investment for a huge population. I mean, our population is huge for us.
Yeah.
Like, well, and that's, I mean, this additional nine-twenty-one is protecting the city's liability is what it's for.
Yeah.
It's not really protecting them, the citizens or their potential.
Thank you, their information from the city's one view. Additional questions? Discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Rick?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Ewa?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Please follow up on that. Maybe sometime we hear what we're doing to protect our software or, or these things, what safeguards are in place?
We're getting an insurance policy from Fox. The answer you're looking for. Okay. I didn't great heard that. Item number C. Tim, do you wish to rise and speak about that, or do you want to take this, just let us, my growing suit?
I want you to make the suit in, in my favor.
Akon, I see it on here.
It is.
That's all I got to say.
Yeah, they're a little bit higher than this.
Yeah, they are a little bit high.
And it's a little bit different because we're, we're three cars, so we're moving, moving around through the vehicles.
This is an all-in bid, though. So what I'm seeing here is the local for one thousand, cornerstone for eleven-hundred and eighty-one, and Kancom for three thousand and sixty-seven.
That's correct.
The competency of the one-thousand-dollar bid is not in question?
No.
I'll make a motion to approve that pedaling unit for one-thousand dollars.
And Tim, is there a second?
Second.
Additional discussion?
Is there any potential for conflict of interest in this case? He's kind of sort of employee, isn't he?
He's a volunteer or service. And I would say for a conflict of interest, uh, it was a bid process.
And we was not given any permission with that.
No, I wasn't questioning that, but I just, you know, just since he is a volunteer, just kind of wait through that potential conflict of interest. But, you know, we just...
Okay, additional comments? Roll call installation. Yeah.
Do we have this car yet?
Tim?
Do we have the car yet?
No, mid-April.
Oh, mid-April.
What color was it, Bill? It's black. White, white. Additional comments? Legitimate comments? Hearing none. Greg, roll call, please.
Kelly?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
David?
Can you write me this off then?
Well, I'm Kelly.
Ewa? Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, chief. Item B, KMEA Board of Directors. Greg, do you wish to address this on this?
Um, we have two positions open. One is the director number two position, um, which is currently held by the mayor. Um, the second position is the alternate. That particular person holding that position is no longer, uh, employed by the city. So we have two positions filled to the KMEA Board of Directors.
These can be council members or the mayor?
Or employees.
Or employees.
Are you willing to continue this, Bill?
I would.
I nominate Bill Taylor for director number two.
Second.
They moved in seconded for director number two. Let's just take care of that one. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Yes.
All those saying aye. Alternate?
Who is the individual that is holding this position right now?
That would be, uh, that one.
Is, is there sufficient staffing that Matt could take on this role and would keep you on?
Uh, I would probably say no, but nobody else would be quite frankly, yeah.
Well, you prefer the other person, right?
Yeah. And it doesn't have to be on a permanent basis. Um, it could be on a, since it was an employee position, there's the, there's the, you can have that position be on a permanent basis. Or I guess it's not permanent, but dog, a two-year cycle, I guess that's right.
I nominate Blaine. If that's all right with you, Blaine. Second. Moved in seconded. Discussion? Blaine, do you wish to make the discussion? Hearing none from Blaine? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Thank you very much. Wes Star. Greg, I believe you're going to have to regress us on this also, a letter, it'll be addressed.
Wes Star is getting ready to what they call a section two oh-five filing, which is what is required by the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission to modify the rate tariff. The three items that are changing the tariff, uh, one is the return on equity on their stock, proposing to lower it from ten-point-two percent to nine-point-seven percent. The other issue is what they call, uh, P-Bots or post, uh, post-employment benefits other than pensions. Looking to lower that, I think, from about...
Considered.
Three million dollars, if I remember right.
From ten-point-seven?
Six million dollars. And then the last item is an increase in the Wolf Creek decommissioning trust fund allocation each year from two-point-seven million dollars to five-point-seven million dollars. The net impact on the rate, um, would be a decrease of forty-two cents per kilowatt.
Is that to the city?
That's to the city. That's the wholesale rate, yes. They're requesting the letter of concurrence. It's not something that is required. It does not prevent them from filing it. It is not a requirement for filing. They are just looking for it because they would like to get this typically the timeline, sixty days, from filing to formal approval if there's no, um, uh, contesting of the filing. I have spoken with, uh, our firm legal counsel. You know, without, without going through the whole formula, which would require hiring a rate consultant to, to, about twenty thousand dollars. Not sure it's worth that expense, uh, partly because the rate's going down. You know, whether it's fully reflected in the formula, uh, would, would take a rate consultant to determine that. She also said that she was going, there are other parties to this agreement, um, that being Kecco. Sorry, getting into acronyms. Kansas Electric Power Cooperatives are part of this agreement. There are some independent, uh, electric cooperatives, uh, that are part of this. There are some independent electric cooperatives that are part of this agreement also. She was going to visit with the legal counsel for the Kansas Electric Power Cooperatives. I haven't heard back from her today. Supposed to have that conversation this afternoon. My recommendation would be to approve the letter of concurrence pending the outcome of the discussion and advice of our court legal counsel. Then what, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Probably just going to say some.
Then move, is there a second?
Second.
Greg, you got additional comment?
The additional comment I have is I still think we should file an intervention on this. And by intervention, all it does is puts us on the docket as an interested party. So that any information that comes forward, we get directly from the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. Also, if an independent party from this agreement intervenes and wants to change the filing in a way that could be detrimental to us, if we haven't filed an intervention, we cannot file after the fact.
Does that need to be part of the motion? Or can we just do that as a staff?
You just give me the direction.
It's in document in an earlier communication that we're going to file intervention, is that right?
Well, it was my recommendation.
Okay, okay.
And Greg, do you think this rate they're talking about here, decreasing the rate slightly, is a one-year thing they're talking about? Or for the remainder of our contract?
It's a one-year thing. They recap, we get a new rate effective every one of every year.
And well, forty-two cents doesn't sound a lot to the general listening audience that notes indicate here that that equates with the annual savings of twenty-two thousand, two-hundred dollars on our wholesale electric purchases. And Greg, once again, you're to be commended because reading through this is really, really awful. And Greg is always in the forefront of these power battles. And we're fortunate to be on his side.
Absolutely, I agree with it.
Greg, I have one question. You may know everybody that's involved in this. It was all these cooperating, some big guys, and then us. Is that basically what it is? Are there other us, those little guys?
Well, there are other, there are other smaller municipalities out there.
Okay.
Black phoenixes.
I'm sorry.
Black phoenixes.
A smaller Kansas municipalities. But because we've intervened in the past, they always come to us.
They know who we are.
No, wait. They know who you are.
Some of the smaller ones, they just send them a letter and say, here, forward.
Yeah. Okay. Additional discussion on the Westar letter of concurrence?
Quick question, maybe this will be for later. But it's either rumored or possible sale of Westar. Will that impact this? Or if that were to happen, would that be a threat or an opportunity to work with the panel?
I understand it's more than a rumor that they're exploring potential suitors. But it's probably too early to tell whether that's a threat or an opportunity. I am hoping it's an opportunity because so much has changed in this industry of what we had to acquire this power supply to today, that there's much better opportunities today than there was in two thousand nine or two thousand ten when we were doing battle on this agreement that we currently have.
Good point, thank you, Cory. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Thank you very much. Gary, you wish to step forward and talk about the thing, Riverside restroom. Notice that entrance. I did tell people I have restroom stall. He won't replace the.
Hey, Captain, permanent island. We have this budgeted to make some improvements to that little shack next to the Comfy Playground. It's not an ADA facility, but it's real handy for parents and kids because it's right nearby the playground equipment. I want to replace fixtures, I want to do some painting, I want to put, there's a couple of windows that have been boarded up. I think glass block would look real nice, it'd let some light in every day. And maybe do something with the roof, just make it look better. Plus, we have this summer's coming up in that park. The first, the first go is to get the fixtures updated. This is the toilets, sinks, and all the associated hardware that goes with it. Got three bids. Had a big discrepancy in the low bid, so I asked for a material, itemized material list. And I'm sorry, even after looking at the lists, I think that Royal Flush and TCD were comparable. And the other bid was just not suitable to a community playground, restroom. I just don't think quality of materials there. So I'm recommending that we go with a higher bid, but the lower higher bid with Royal Flush. And then, any questions or like this?
So Royal Flush, I mean, he doesn't spell out exactly what is involved there, but I assume that he's replacing the same exact number of fixtures.
That's correct.
On the list.
Yes. And actually, the material is very comparable, too. I mean, it's just, you know.
So they provided a list, we just don't.
After the fact, yeah. Because of the discrepancy, I needed to look into it, see what was going on. And Mark and Tom did really what I wanted, which was provide a list of suitable replacements for that facility. And being comparable, I'm comfortable going with that lower bid opposed to, even though it's higher than the Royal.
Gary, I'm looking here, I'm trying to remember, is there lighting or ventilation included in any of this?
No, not in this park, no.
Will there be?
Yeah, I think we should, well, like I said, I kind of want to do some daylight lighting with changing the window treatment. I would agree with you that it needs some kind of ventilation, it's kind of smell. And I don't think that would be that hard to correct with maybe some.
Forty years ago, it was kind of smell.
Yeah. I cover that up to a extent, but I agree with you. I think we need to, we need to ban the facility. I don't know how to do it, but I'll.
It's almost seen on that later.
Yes, this is just part one. We got seventy-five hundred dollars in the budget. And really, I think, another couple thousand, I'll add for what I want to be by some.
Take the outside, take the inside, do all those same things, so make it cool. Cool, can be fresh.
There was a lot of "I," when you said, "I want to paint."
Yeah.
So I'm curious to get that.
No, I agree with you.
So the difference in the quality of the items that were listed, so we're saying that it's worth more, we go, right, lasts longer, is it?
Yes. And so your, lasts longer, more importantly, the more vandalism.
Which was my next question. Do you think we get quite a bit of vandalism there?
Yes.
More so than the one at the other park?
No, less, but still quite a bit.
Frustrating. I have one other question.
Forty-five years ago, I was a pretty good target, so.
And sadly, it's a very important question because you said that both of these bids were pretty close. On Tom Mock's, it says tax included.
I checked, I checked that with Tom. He said he puts that on all his bids, and he says, but your tax exists, so that number's zero.
Okay, so that is what it is.
Yeah, that's been factored.
Okay. You seem to know an awful lot about this place for forty-five years.
That's a time limit, more. Is there outside lighting around this substantial? Or will it be replaced with a LED?
We've gotten fairly good lighting in that area of park now. It was recently updated, we did underground. In fact, just a few weeks ago, we replaced a pole and a light, so. I'm comfortable, at some point, we'll do LED lighting in both parks. Not very.
Additional questions? Gary, reference Riverside restroom renovation at this time?
Is there a timeline?
Gary, timeline?
Before midsummer.
Will that be lighting, painting, everything doors?
Yes.
All the things you have told us about yet tonight?
This.
Maybe not that.
The light actors. Roll call, please.
Emo?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Motion carried. Gary, thank you for staying to talk to us about the.
Oh, we did, we did, we didn't have a motion. Didn't have most.
Well, I'll make a motion that we go with the.
Will, how'd you let that happen?
I was kind of doing some over here.
I looked at you.
Make a vote. We make sure Gary's here.
Your schedule was way too long on a three-thousand, four-thousand-dollar topic.
Just remember the policy, Carl.
We go as the vote first and then.
For the, for the people in the audience on the TV, we're going to run that back a little bit. And have a motion.
I will make a motion that we accept the bid from Royal Flush for the amount of three thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars and fifty-six cents.
Second.
Now, we have a motion and a second. Is there discussion?
Has anything changed in the last minute seconds?
No.
Yes, we have a motion and a second.
That's fair, I take full responsibility, I made a mistake, and I apologize for not keeping up with that, so. Greg, please call the roll.
Kelly?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
After a motion, it's Gary. We will move on now to the Viking Valley. And Gary talked us about that.
At the state session a couple of weeks ago, we talked about hiring consultants to look at Viking Valley. Also, to provide material and estimated cost of replacements, which is important, an important direction that we would like to have in our attempt to renovate the park. I have for you a testament, or no, a bid of eighteen hundred dollars to bring a consultant to town for two days. I did get some schedule today, or actually Friday, and making be here as early as April twelve, thirteen. And other times through April, so I was well happy to see that.
Okay.
I recommend that we approve the expenditure, eighteen hundred dollars, to others.
So, council, what is your desire?
Make that motion.
Second. We actually have a motion and a second is a further discussion. Further discussion? Mr. Dumas, please call the roll.
Emo?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Motion carried, item H. Gary, I believe you're standing in for this. The item is the Swenson Park Fish Pond that was asked to be put on for discussion.
I thought this on for discussion, mainly some people had some concerns over it. Our mayor wanted first on council, they talked back some, and nothing was ever really officially done. I don't think staff has had any direction on it.
I wanted it on there also.
Oh, okay. Well, what's the other one there?
In the, well, for sure. I don't even know what kind of a motion to make.
You don't have to, just, let's report it to Gary, see where he fills these stands, or let's start with that. And so should we, and Greg, let's start with Greg, he's got.
Well, I guess, I mean, this was asked to be put on for discussion from a council perspective. So I think council needs to be driving this discussion and not staff. Well, first of all, I think Emo got the same first call about this. A gal who goes over there and plays with her children and so on, thinks the place, the fountain and the pool areas stink. And our big breeding ground will be for mosquitoes, et cetera. And after that, she started talking to some of her friends. I personally have had five phone calls on this, which someone calling me, that's a lot. And it's not that people are demanding that we rebuild, that we do this, we do that, but something needs to be done about it to make it not be a sanitary problem. And I'm agreeing with that, so.
Emo? Is that right, Emo?
That's pretty much it. You know, and I just feel like with all the other big projects we've had, we've kind of cut behind us long enough, and now it's probably time to bring it back to the forefront.
Cory, any discussion?
Well, I guess I have a question. I've just been investigating previously, and is there a big price tag put on the, I've asked the fix it, so. What has been done?
Well, we've talked about it before, Gary. We've looked at replacement, we've looked at fixing it. Have never come to a, given a general consensus on what direction. We get to a point where we think we have something, we actually get a bid, and we were up to fifty thousand dollars expenditure, and we didn't have enough money to do it. So it's just kind of languished. I think we're kind of talking a couple of different issues. One is the current condition with the wash, and et cetera. And then the other is, what is the future of that particular pond and valley? Well, let's talk about the first part first. That is, can we do something to make it less of a health and or visual impairment?
You bet. The plan all along is to clean it out. Typically, if any of you have a fish pond before, there's that day in spring, usually it's in April, when you go out and go, oh my God, I got to get this thing cleaned out. Well, it's hit a little early this year, and I don't like doing it in the cold because that water is still real cold. Typically, you clean out pond, you pump it out, you clean, scrub it, fill it with water again. Hopefully, you got the fish back into the new water. Worked out a stock tank with Tim Dunn, so we'll be able to temporarily house the fish when we do it. I'm pretty sure they're done, and we've had maybe a couple that we've had the fish out. I've heard there were reports of dead fish. Yeah. We had thirty going into the winters, and that's why we left the water. Because, and I go over water, fish in ponds for years. And as long as it's deep enough, and as long as you just don't disturb them until it warms up again, it's usually fine. But again, it hit us a little early this year. We've had more park patrons in March than I can ever, I mean, it's just, that's a big deal. So we will clean it up.
So the condition of the pool, is it leaky?
No.
Fountain's not work, what's the issue with that?
The fountain's not work. In fact, when we pumped in the past, when we were pumping, we were losing a lot because the circulation system is broken somewhere. And at this point, I don't even believe Tim Dunn, we even have a pump in the housing. No, it's all been abandoned. That is years ago that they pumped it. But it sat for a few years, just empty, it filled fully, it just sat. And last summer, we talked about it and said, well, we must put some water in it and at least have some fish. And I was surprised with the water out all year. We didn't lose any water at all. I figured we had to fix some leafs. We didn't. I had a lot of positive feedback during the year. Saw a lot of kids, you know, washing the fish, and really we didn't have any issues at all. Generally, we may have issues with the ponds in spring when everybody goes, oh my God, we need to clean that thing out. Well, this fact, sure, they had it cleaned out last week. But we'll do it. And I want to, I want to fill it right back up again and do the same thing we did last year. In spite of not having fountain jets, so what? It's a nice, it's a nice.
The little work about purification, are they clean more? It's not about mosquito.
Oh, yeah, that's a good one, too. We didn't have a single incident with mosquitoes because we use the streets department, dunks, or mosquito side, I don't, what do they call them?
Back-to-back.
Back-to-back. We threw away too many of them in there, but we didn't have a single larva in that pond. And I used to, we checked it all the time because that's a real concern. We must not, see if I'm not so sure about that. But we washed that pond from mosquitoes, never saw any. Now, we had complaints from time to time, and that was typically a water bug population with ants and. Now, we had complaints from time to time, and that was typically a water bug population with ants and everything. Never mosquito. And right now, you're not going to see a mosquito in any kind of aquatic water. It's a littler. So, that's a, that's a number one concern for us, mosquito people. We don't want to see any.
Drain it, clean it, fill it again, and put the fish back in.
Put the fish back in, but not in water.
That still leaves the fountain, and we know the circulation system is no good. The fountain itself is still stable as it stands.
It's all part of that system, so.
But I mean, is the fountain structurally gonna...
Oh, no, it's, it's...
It's stable, the bikes aren't gonna fall off and all that, so.
Fence is in good condition. We'll probably take out the barberry shrubs if they're kind of scratching.
This shows my ignorance on the subject, but is it not possible to simply put a recirculating pump on the surface of the ground with some kind of holes or pipe going into that that doesn't have to involve all the underground plumbing?
Yeah, we could do something like that. I don't know that it improves anything.
I don't know.
There's power and...
We've got, in fact, Keith, you're still here. Keith helped us get a painting, Water Lilies. We had some really nice water lilies from Wichita in the pond, and it didn't do real well last year. But ideally, you have a fairly calm surface, and then those lilies will tend to take up. They have a lot of agitation. Lilies generally don't like that, so I'm not real concerned about agitating the water.
Yeah.
As I said, I don't know much about it.
Does that not quite help, Gary, the ecosystem and all that as well?
No, it's actually shade and help.
Right, so that, that's a good thing. Yeah.
They don't winterize them, do they?
They shade, yeah, oh, yeah. They should be hardy.
Right? So, they'll be, after you clean it and they fill it, the lilies will be...
They're still down in there.
This is off, a little bit, is that water fountain working or this is...
Kids tend to clog the drain with sand. We're constantly pushing through, trying to get sand through.
Well, forty years ago.
I don't know where the sand's coming from.
Council members, you know, you've heard the description of what Gary and his staff want to do. Gary, did you get the timeline on this?
No, I really traded a voice at the party. Uh, it's gonna be after Easter, because we're just kind of...
So, within the next two weeks, you would expect that to be completed?
I would expect in the next two weeks.
By next council meeting, that'll be completed and you report that.
I, I would promise that, but... We're kind of watching what. It's a cold, slimy job when the temperature...
He doesn't have to. But you don't have to get down there. Tim goes down, doesn't he?
No, I think he won't.
No way. So, thank you for discussing this with us.
We had to clarify some of the items to...
I could my team building exercise, you know?
Yeah, sure could. I'm busy, but.
Are we... Are we ready for item eleven? Item eleven, the park had reports. Gary, thank you for being at the podium promptly to discuss community development.
Uh, real quickly, I just want to bring council up to speed on some of the efforts that AdHawk Roundtable was making towards the downtown seating issues to talk about the past. They've identified, or they focused on three topics. Uh, encourage businesses to add movable seating that meets our current code. Identify locations for permanent seating to be funded by others, not the city. And then finally, to consider changing the code to allow placement flexibility, and I'll explain that real quickly. Our current code is fairly simple. Any furniture placed on the right-of-way has to be of commercial quality. It has to withstand winds at twenty miles per hour. There isn't really a weight, a weight classification, twenty miles an hour. Has to be in tree line or against a permanent building. We need insurance and a whole harmless from that business, okay? That detailed plan has to be approved by the design review board, and there's a $50 annual charge. That's our current policy. So, if AdHawk wants more businesses to put movable seating in that code, then those are the things they have to do. Actually, number one is they need to come to design review with a plan and say, "This is where we're at." And that just doesn't happen. It hasn't happened in years and years. The second item, permanent seating, I think they want to do a tour of the area. I believe we're talking about the South Southern Sun's permanent seating tables, maybe the library. And in fact, anything in the South Hundred Block is probably a fair game, because there just isn't a lot of seating in the South Hundred Block now on the sidewalk. This permanent seating, I'm guessing, would be, well, in fact, be it over the city, funded through sponsorships, crowdfunding, memorials. Eventually, we're gonna see a plaque. There will be a plaque sometime. We had code on that, too, by the way, memorial plaque. That's not a bad idea, though. On the flexibility issue, consider changing code to allow placement flexibility. Change the code, number one, reduce the annual fee. I think $50 is probably a little stiff for an annual cost to a business that just wants to put some flower pots out, and maybe a chair up against the building. You know? But I think the $50, I think that's why we don't get a lot of buying, because people don't want to spend $50 for their two pots and a chair. The other thing, though, would be, I would suggest that we allow some seating alternatives similar to what we allow with the sidewalk buffet licensing process. And that says, "The location and size of seating will not unreasonably impede pedestrian traffic." We don't say that they gotta leave eight feet, or ten feet, or what. We don't, we don't say that. We say, "Will not unreasonably impede pedestrian traffic." And what if we said the same thing on the sidewalk seating enhancement side? What if we said, "Put it wherever you want, but design review has to determine that you are not impeding traffic." Given, and again, case by case, given your place in the downtown environment, will you be blocking traffic? Case by case. Also, what we require on sidewalk buffets is, you gotta get permission from the adjoining business company. And why not require that, too? You gotta get buying from your neighbors. And if you can't talk to neighbors and they're letting you do furniture right out in the middle, let's say, you don't get permission from design review. But let's, let's get people back into the business of making it cool downtown. I think street furniture is great. It's like punctuation that, that kind of frames and, and defines the space, and it makes it more memorable, and people linger on when there's seating. They, obviously, they sit down, and, and that memory makes them come back, so I think that's a good idea. But let's get the code back. I'm open to recommendations. If Becky was here, I'm sure she would say write an ordinance and we'll pass the next, next meeting. Is that the sense of this board? You want to think about it? You want a study session, and how do you, what do you want to do?
I don't see any problem with you writing an ordinance, since you can have some ideas and then discuss.
Well, we just did the sidewalk buffet. We're just, I would model it, kind of on that notion. But again, enforcement, enforcement. If you want to put pots and a chair out there, it's gonna cost $25. You're gonna have to get an annual license, and we're gonna enforce it.
Why, why does it need to be an annual license if nothing changes? I mean, why not a one-time application fee? That, that ownership changes, or if the individual pieces change, it would require an application?
Because they're using the public right-of-way. And I would also say, from an annual license standpoint, you know, one of the topics I want to talk about is property tax debt. Now, what time do we stop getting away money and start thinking about what we're gonna do to support our budgets? Because if the property tax goes in place the way we, it's written right now, we're gonna be cutting more than programs, we're gonna be cutting people, et cetera, and we are staffing a level that is significantly less than cities are slicing the same services.
And I think that goes to a reduction in, in the work, to staff, if, if it's a one-time application fee. And I think that when we have an attractive downtown that drives people to our downtown shop, it also drives up sales staff.
One thing I would say, and that what you just said, though, I think Betty, the annual fee and whatever also brings it to the forefront. You got the expected, the share at the same time. I mean, about the...
You can't do a license and then have them... Well, there's the dilapidated or break it down. There's the, the administrative expense of, of that. And secondly, we also have the administrative expense of tracking and making sure that they're filing that certificate of insurance with the city, and that the city is taking care of from that perspective. And when I say the city, I'm not talking about the one business owner. I'm talking about the 3,400 other people that we represent. I think using the public right-of-way is a very strong argument.
Gary, does the AdHawk committee give indication what, what level of, of, you said $50 might be too high? Did they give indication what would be acceptable?
No, I think, fly with twenty-five. Cory, what do you think?
I don't think we really talked about whether it would be acceptable.
Gary, I think the best thing, what Kelly said, for you to wrap up an ordinance, says we've done in the past, and we can redo it, and, and, you know, see what we need at that point. And then if we don't tell you to go forward, we're going backwards, so I don't know what we're stuck where we are. And I think there is the, the idea of changes out there. We need to make some changes. What would we have and then make it work?
Would it work? How do you go to AdHawk and talk to them? Because that's people I know every week to talk about. Okay, good.
I was saying, they're working on some, I mean, their thoughts began a lot, but I read in their community notes and stuff. Yeah, from the notes. That's what I mean, from the notes that I see, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I'm just gonna kind of give you guys highlights from each of the sub-departments that I oversee, just kind of doing the things going on right now. First thing, just been on recreation, as most of you probably know. Earlier this month, we listed the fourth annual daddy daughter dance, and we were actually able to have it at J. Yo Sunshroom this year for the first time. All our previous dances have actually been over at elementary school in the gym, and it has been great there. The girls always enjoy seeing the gym all decorated up, and it's a no cost as well, which is a real smart, too. But it's actually my record made those two questions to me this year, you know, how they were thought about the day of Sunshroom. And it was kind of something in the back of my head, but financially wasn't something I ever really pursued. But, and then, of course, after my record suggested that they do, all of them were on the principal as well, so. Ultimately, after that, I kind of debated about it and took, I decided to take the risk. With that risk, we have to increase the overall price of it by about $10. Mostly, just cover all our costs, our costs first, and then also that number reflected being able to make some money off of it as well. And since my tenure, the dance had roughly fifty couples in attendance. And then actually, last year, we were able to bring that number up to pretty close to eighty couples last year. And this year, surprisingly, having it over at the J. Yo Sunshroom, we brought that number up to eighty couples, and then also that number did include thirty, probably thirty or so, plus additional siblings with that. So, it was a pretty packed place, a lot of people. The other great thing about being over at the Sunshroom was just that it completely changed the atmosphere. It was much more intimate, and I just got a lot of rave reviews on it. So, it was a real pleasant surprise, a good risk to take, and it worked out really well. And I hope that we can continue doing the dance there from now on. Our next sport coming up is youth soccer. We're actually starting practices tomorrow afternoon. And we have both the Bethany men's and women's soccer team helping us this year. Typically, in the past, it's just been the women's team, so to have those women helping us is great, because it's basically double help, more hands available, and just kind of makes them run really smoothly. We have about 200 kids signed up, which is great, as typical of it for soccer. And it fits our basic program of a popular sport. We do not, because it's a bit, we do not play with McPherson in soccer, but we will be playing with Marquette again. And this is kind of an interesting trend I've noticed, too, not just with soccer, but with all our sports. We seem to be getting some more kids from Marquette playing with us versus Marquette Recreation. I can't really give reason why it might be, other than, you know, if you're going to school here and carpooling, it might be easier to get here, since they're already up here. But then you have four soccer teams this year that'll play, or be playing with us, and the rest of us, which is fifteen, are coming from us, so the other kind of interesting thing with youth soccer is we kind of could fit ourselves with soccer. We have teams to do that, if Marquette was in the picture. We will be starting games, starting that first day of April, April 1st, April 4th. And the other figure of that, too, is just do the Bethany soccer team schedules. We have some in a couple of Friday evening night games, so the first two weeks are actually moving on Friday nights instead of Saturday mornings. And then the other event we have coming up is the community Easter egg hunt. And fortunately, I look like the weather forecast at the end, it's not looking so pretty. I hope we can still pull it off, but we'll see. And then moving on to golf, majority of the golf information, I'm gonna repeat for you guys from our little discussion and study session. But as we stated, we bought my new membership, single plus one. And then also the new punch card, where you play your five rounds, so you get a six-three. And that also applies to both nine holes and even holes. They can use it for either one. And then as we also stated earlier, we have about $1,500 in green fees for the month of February this year. And just back on to that, I was actually looking at all the other years since we've owned the golf course. And this February, that's some progress we've had in February since we've owned it. So, that was kind of just an interesting statistic to see and kind of like get, I guess, from a better nature. We may or may not see that again, so. And then we also increased both here and concession prices. And then our tournament schedule that we have in play right now will start at the beginning of next month. And then lastly, the pool. The waterside is still not done. They were finishing up putting the color on it, and the way the color looked in the buckets compared to when it finally, finally dried on the side, not what we wanted to, so they had to go back to where they're from, Chicago, Illinois, and get the different materials. So, we'll hopefully be back up here this week or next week to get that finished up for us. Obviously, the wood structure that we've been talking about, we'll be getting some TLC. The floor painting that we earlier submitted bids for, he was waiting for the temperature to get a little warm before he could go out and do that, and so he should restart on that in the next couple of weeks as well. The rest of it, we're just gonna be pushing a bunch of things for the, for the pool, including umbrellas. Cool furniture, we got rid of all the cool furniture that was existing in the patio area. So, we'll be replacing that in the near future. We also have plans to replace the second diving moor. Last year, if you recall, our short diving moor broke on us, so we replaced it for the season was over last year. So, now the high dive is a budget to replace this year. And then we'll also be upgrading all our signage that we have around. It's just really faded and it's been a while, so it just needs to be revamped and upgraded. And then another small project we've been working on, where I've been working on, the steps leading up to the top of the waterside, we had some traction strips on them, and there's basically, there's nothing left there, so I've been starting putting new strips on there. Somehow, just for safety, it might really be new, so have people didn't hurt or anything going up and down. And then just another slide project that I've been working on for the summer, an idea I kind of came up with that I think would be super fun, would be movie height of the pool. So, basically, what this would consist of is BYOF, bring your own floaty, and then you just sit the pool with the floaty, and we'll project a movie. Either if we can find a wall there, project it off of there, or we just have to rent some kind of projection system to do it. I think it'd be really cool to show dogs, but... I might send home some kids with a few years, did that, so probably just to be a family-friendly movie for that, but... Other than that, if you guys have questions or...
Thank you, Kate. Thank you. It would be Jocelyn. Greg, are you handling administration?
Yes.
Thank you, Greg.
Well, auditors are here this week. Do a lot of new firm, the prior auditor sold his business to this firm. They've honored, or honored the contract we had in place. Of course, anytime you change auditors, it's always, not always a smooth transition. We're experiencing that so far. Not that they're doing bad, just change, different, different expectations, different questions, et cetera. In front of each of you is a legislative update. What I want to talk about that was property tax law. In here, it talks about turnaround, which is what they call drop dead date, which they never really don't follow anymore. The property tax law, which was adopted last year, was introduced in the omnibus tax bill at the end of the session. And it was inserted into the bill as an amendment. There were no hearings or anything on it. There were two bills introduced this year, one in the Senate, which removed that property tax law implementation date from July one of twenty eighteen to July one of two thousand sixteen. Plus, there were exemptions in that bill, and it stripped all the exemptions out of that bill. The one introduced in the House kept the date of twenty eighteen. It did allow some exemptions. The Chair of the House, can't get my committee name right, that's looking at this particular, the House Tax Committee. And then the Senate Tax Committee recommended that the groups get together and try to negotiate a type of settlement bill. This bill is being pushed by the Kansas Association of Realtors. So the League of Kansas Municipalities, Kansas Association of Counties have been in negotiations to try to get this bill where it's livable for all. Some of the amendment, or the agreed upon changes would, that it would become effective July one of two thousand seventeen. That we would be able to increase taxes for federal and state unfunded mandates, which we get handed those frequently. It would also allow for increase if there was an unfavorable court decision with financial implications for the issue, or for the city. Some of the things that are not, or that we would like to see, we being the municipalities of Kansas, is that one of the areas that grows so much faster in terms of cost than a, than the Consumer Price Index is public safety expenses, equipment services, et cetera. Trying to get that inserted into the, the bill. They're still negotiating whether a compromise is reached that something goes forward this year. I don't know. Like, I don't, and I guess my follow-up point is, if a compromise is not reached, does that mean? Because both of these bills have passed out of their respective committees. But there hasn't been any scheduled debate on either form. So if a compromise is not reached, I'm not sure where this statement is at this point in time.
Then if it falls back to the bill, it's already been passed, which is on good terms.
Correct. But at least it still has that September one, I'm sorry, July one of twenty eighteen effective date, which allows the next legislative session to, to work, hopefully work something out. I know submitted some information to the league today about public safety expenses that have exceeded, you know, the Consumer Price Index. One of the examples I gave was costs of an ambulance. We're scheduled to replace an ambulance next year after fifteen years of service. In two thousand two, that ambulance cost a hundred and two thousand dollars. Two thousand sixteen, that same ambulance was a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And if it only went up by the amount of seat of this Consumer Price Index, it would only be a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. And we still have a minute in the air. And I guarantee you, it's gonna be higher than a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars next year. You know, we're having to update our radio system. Our current radios, when we replace them, are about fifty, when we break them. Our public safety radios. Our current radios cost us about fifteen hundred dollars a piece. This will be a, an upgrade that is gonna be required because McPherson County Dispatch is changing from the E-DAC system to the P-25 or P-S-25 system. That radio will cost us three thousand dollars for a single radio. Total expense for fire, EMS, and police will be in excess of eighty-four thousand dollars if we replaced all of those radios at one time.
Greg, if nothing happens, and let's say this gets simple with it. And we do experience these increases in the cost. Our options are gonna be have an election or ballot where our public and citizens can vote on it. And if we don't do that, we'll have to cut. Or if, let's say, they do vote on it, and fails, then we'll have to start cutting other areas. And can you give an example of what?
Well, let me see, and here's the bigger challenge. Is, is we have to adopt our budget no later than August fifteenth.
Statutorily.
Statutorily. Well, the statute, or the, or the bill that was adopted was written that this ballot can only happen at a regularly scheduled election. And that's how it's currently written. Well, also last session, they changed where local elections are no longer in April, but are now in November. So we have to adopt a budget in August before the actual election. So in essence, you can't increase your budget at all. Well, you can by whatever the Consumer Price Index. You know, another challenge we have is we've been fortunate in with our health insurance program. Three, four years ago, we went from a standard coverage of deductible coinsurance, et cetera, coverage program because the cost was going up so high. We implemented a health reimbursement program whereby we have underwriters, not the right word, but an umbrella insurance coverage. And we, as a city, insure that lower portion. That has helped manage our, our annual increases from anywhere from about four to five percent. And we've been fortunate under that program that we have been grandfathered under the Affordable Care Act. And the fortunate part in that is that under the Affordable Care Act, being grandfathered, we are rated upon our actual utilization of that health insurance and not our age demographic. We were told that we're gonna lose our grandfather status with the renewal of our health insurance for twenty seventeen. And we will be rated strictly upon an age demographic of the group and for each person that's covered in the group and not by our utilization. So as a group, and we've been very good. I mean, I can tell you that from a generic prescription drug standpoint, which is really driving healthcare costs today, we have a ninety-eight percent generic utilization rate, which is extremely high. You know, from, from the main, from the actual care side, we have been very, I mean, we've gotten to where we have about an eighty-five thousand dollar balance in there for insurance cover claims. And we just stay right there with it. We have been able to manage the impact for both the employees and for the citizens that pay taxes through this program. We self-insured dental through this program. And it's worked really well. Well, losing our grandfather status, we were looking at a minimum of a forty percent increase in our premium based upon our current age demographics. So, I mean, that's why we've already established a health insurance committee to look at potential options because, I mean.
And we're losing the grandfather status because of the way the ACA was written or because of the insurance company that the business is with?
Because of the way the ACA is written. We were actually, our policy year was, was January one to December thirty-one. In two thousand thirteen, to become grandfather, we renewed December one as opposed to January one. And that was, that was so that we could get the grandfather status down a little longer that. And that's under the ACA. So that's kind of where it's ended. The last item, in front of you, and I'm not gonna go through it. This just is a history of, since two thousand two to two thousand fifteen and through first few months of two thousand sixteen of our monthly revenues for, for the general fund. And going through this worksheet, you have the gross revenues. And it's not broken out by revenue type. It's just the gross revenue, total expense. And then the, the net revenue or net loss in revenue for each of those year. Then it goes down and it breaks the sub-funds of the general fund, the general government, police department, fire department, street department, park department, CBB appropriation, swimming pool, and then the conference center. And that's for your information. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask either me or Larry. And one of the things that I have also done, and this is on a, a little more granularity, but not a lot, on the Sunstrom Conference Center to give you an idea of where the revenues and expenditures have been in the, the first three and a half years of operation. I know if you get questions about that, I just wanted to share that information with you.
Thank you. Counsel, any others at this time? Any others?
I did have a gentleman come and talk to me about trucking spaces downtown. He mentioned they thought that the city had narrowed them at some point. I talked to Dave, a couple of people. There's a general consensus that they have not been narrowed. I went out there and measured them. They're eight foot across. That is considered compact parking, which definitely is pretty common for most parking lots. Walmarts, most of them are like eight foot. Pretty standard. I think the biggest problem that we run into is because it's diagonal parking. People with big trucks sometimes have a hard time pulling in the diagonal parking straight. Okay, so.
And then little cars have a hard time backing out because they can't see. Do you want to make a pick-up?
Absolutely. I did contact some business owners. And the consensus from every business owner downtown that I've talked to was, we don't have enough parking. They're not worried about the width of the parking.
Okay? Thank you for handling that. I assume you got back to the citizen?
I will after this meeting.
Thank you very much. Any others? A German motion?
Totally.
Okay. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.